So we are on.
Yep.
And I would like to open the agenda for the Georgetown Planning Board December 12th, 2018, meeting in Memorial Town Hall. We're on the third floor in the conference room. It's five after seven. We have a brief handout to begin the meeting on global warming. We have minutes. We have few vouchers. Correspondence. We have one public hearing on 111 Thurlow Street. One A and R, which is going to be withdrawn. Planning Office Item 66 Parrish Road, the endorsement of the approval of the decision conditions. And then we have one more Planning Office item, which is discussion on the 5G telecommunications technology, an introduction to us of that. So with that, I'm gonna hand out to my fellow board members a piece for your reading pleasure on global warming. And what, because I did not get this into the packet a week in advance, we will carry this to the next meeting. The only thing that I would say about this is that the objectives, basically, it's about developing a subcommittee of one or whoever else wants to join. And it's about the Planning Board voting to support three basic components. One is putting the latest IPCC data on the table for the public's information. And doing that by the school committee, which I'll be speaking in front of tomorrow night, the select board, Georgetown Record, and other ways. So that's just to share the information of that report.
I did wanna mention, I heard a news report today that in a community, maybe Weston-Walthing, they're developing a climate change curriculum. And because in fact, it's only really in earth science and those kinds of classes that it's approached at all.
Yeah.
And it really is, at this point, it's a whole integrated.
It needs to be in every, yeah. That's wonderful to hear.
It's a curriculum.
My understanding in talking with the Chair of the School Committee is that the Curriculum Director will be there tomorrow night at the School Committee as part of this. So.
Outstanding.
Hopefully that'll be pretty great.
That's great. So I'm sure they'll be receptive to incorporating it.
Hopefully. And then the second part of it is to develop a new bylaw for the annual town meeting. And this is stuff we can all talk about. But basically, it's to get the town to vote to agree and support the IPCC report. And then in the town committing to participating via education of the town, education of the children, perhaps there are some ordinances zoning, whatever, that may relate specific to Georgetown that we can implement that have to do with that. Merrimack Valley Planning Commission, and taking the message eventually to our neighboring towns. And so start thinking global, acting local. That's a summary of where that's going. And so I'll say no more on that. And if anybody wanted to ask any questions, you can right now. But otherwise, we'll just put it on the agenda for next time.
Thanks for doing that.
Yeah, no.
Just wanna say two words.
Absolutely.
Stormwater regulations.
So with that, we're gonna go to minutes. We have November 7th, 2018.
Mr. Chairman, if you'll hear it, make a motion to approve the minutes for the November 7th, 2018 Planning Board minutes as written.
Second?
Second.
Motion has been made, and it's been seconded by Joanne, for the approval of the meeting minutes for November 7th, 2018. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Four yes, one absent. We have three vouchers looking for motions on each of those vouchers.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the voucher for HL Graham Associates, Inc., technical review for 66 Parrish Road, $410, as cited in our packets and on this meeting's agenda.
I second.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the voucher to HL Graham Associates, technical review for 66 Parrish Road, and the amount of $410. Any discussion? No discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Four yes, one absent.
All right. I'll combine the other two vouchers. I move to approve the vouchers for Schwab, Inc., Georgetown Planning Board date received stamp for 2019, 2025, for $89.24, and the voucher for Walters Clure for Handbook of Massachusetts Land Use and Planning, $339.50, as cited in our packets and on the agenda.
I second.
Motion has been made, and it's been seconded, to approve the voucher for Schwab, Inc., for a stamp for 2019, 2025, saying Georgetown Planning Board date received, in the amount of $89.24. And voucher to Walters Clure handbook, for the Handbook of Mass Land Use and Planning, three online subscriptions, in the amount of $339.50. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Four yes, one absent. Pass these two over for signatures.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to consider the correspondence as read.
Motion has been made to, oh, need a second?
No, second.
Motion has been made and seconded to consider the correspondence as submitted, as having been read. Any discussion?
Only discussion was at the last meeting, I recall there being a note from Rowley, that Recreation Marijuana Facility is gonna be, I don't know, I don't, I think that there was a zoning board hearing, or maybe planning.
Probably coming up tomorrow night or something.
Yeah, yeah. I just found that interesting in the context of healthy farms and how that's moving.
Right on Route 1.
Seems like a lot of stuff is starting to pop up in that regard.
Oh, yeah.
New report, too?
Yeah, we have, well, we do have one on Route 1 for Rowley. And the other one was for another location in Rowley on Route 1, leading to.
The North Shore is gonna be the funnest place in Massachusetts.
Any more discussion?
Those are close to public transportation.
All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Four yes, one absent. Moving on to the public hearing for 111 Thurlow Street. Map 12, Lot 7A, a proposed mine modification to a definitive subdivision plan. You folks would come forward. And John, if you'd introduce the project and what it is you're looking to do.
Just quickly here, this is a proposal. You wanna look at the TV screen here. It's up there. This is a proposal to transfer as a minor modification to a previously approved subdivision plan that was approved by this Planning Board in 2010. And it would involve this particular parcel right here, equal in size to 3,025 square feet. That particular parcel is actually part of the layout of the court that was approved in 2010. And that court was approved as an accessway, and it contains a driveway approved by the Board for this particular existing dwelling at Lot 77A, which was created in the, with the 2010 subdivision plan. And it was carved off, 77A was carved off of Lot 77, which is right here. And, you know, I did bring up in the comments report to the Board that there are certain notes that apply to the, this parcel, 77A, with the previously approved plan. One of the notes in particular was that the area of the right-of-way, the private court, shall remain in the ownership in perpetuity of Lot 77A. You know, taking into consideration that particular restriction, and that it's built into the deed of Lot 77A, this court being modified, parcel being taken away from the court, and being eventually transferred into the ownership of the abutting property to the east, and that being Lot 78, this one here. And I'll show you down here. In accordance with Mass General Law, and this has been pointed out through questions that I pose to Town Council, the mortgage holder has to be notified, the bank, they has to be notified of any modifications to land. And my question to the applicant's attorney, I mean engineer, surveyor, actually, right?
Actually, yeah. I'd like to introduce myself. My name's Bob Grasso from Engineering Land Services.
You're welcome.
I was, I was part of that approval in 2010, when it was, I actually drew the plan and signed that plan, which was basically, I'll show you the history of it. Excuse me. That was the, actually, I have the green cards to start that public hearing.
Yep, that's good.
Ah, this was a, back then.
Bob, this is on me. I didn't open the public hearing.
Oh, okay. Oh, I'm sorry.
So, need a motion to open the public hearing.
Move to open a public hearing.
Yeah, public hearing.
111 Thurlow Street, map 12, Lot 77A, proposed minor modification to a definitive subdivision plan.
For a second?
Second.
So motion.
If it's a minor modification, it doesn't require a hearing?
Yes, it does.
If it's a major modification, then it requires the hearing. And the determination is usually made by the Board.
Yeah, the only exception to that would be that we already moved forward with publishing the public hearing notice, and the abutters were notified of this hearing this evening. So.
Do we?
Okay.
So, I mean, they.
Okay. Yeah, yeah, okay.
We want the extra mile.
There's an appeal period once you approve this also.
Yeah, usually we vote whether it's a minor or.
Yeah, first you.
Usually we do that, but. Whatever. Roll forward.
Okay, so seeing no more discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Four yes, one absent. Public hearing is opened for this project.
Again, for the record, my name's Bob Grasso from Engineering Land Services. This is a minor modification subdivision, previously approved subdivision that was done in 2010. It was.
So sorry.
So sorry.
Back then, it was allowed that if you had 50-foot width in a 60, a minimum of 60-foot radius, you could have a paper street, which was a private way. And the lot could be created if you doubled the required zoning area for that zone. So it was 40,000. So this lot was created with 81,000, with a odd-shaped court, because the existing property line was a stone wall. So what happened was, this was all one piece. Eventually, this was carved out as a Form A lot, and then we added this court, and then that lot. And that was approved in 2010. They called it a one-lot subdivision, when you could do a 50-foot wide, minimum 50-foot wide cul-de-sac, and then with the correct frontage and double the area. So that was approved in 2010.
Bob, I'm sorry. I'm just curious. Is my name on that? Did I sign that?
Let's see.
I'm trying to flashback on that.
Yes.
It is?
No, it's Tim Howard, Tilly, and I'm not sure if I can read the bottom one.
Yeah, it's probably Harry.
Harry. I do. Okay.
Yeah. Okay, so I just.
It's recorded as a registered, it's in Plan Book 426, Plan 76.
Thank you. Thank you. I was just, I wasn't remembering it, and I was going.
It's 42676. So what we're proposing to do is to modify the right-of-way, not the lot, because that's in one of the notes, that the lot shall not be reconfigured in any way. The lot can never change. But they also say that this right-of-way has to stay with that law, because that's their access. What we're doing is to modify this shape. We're in the spirit of that regulation, we're just offsetting this line 50 feet and making a 30-foot radius curve right here, which we could've just went out straight, which is typically, that was approved back then for the one-lot subdivisions. You could just do 50 feet straight, no curves, and then with cul-de-sac, and then double the area. So this lot's not gonna change. The only thing we're gonna do is break off Parcel A in this green part right here, and that's 3,025 square feet, and it's not a billable lot. So. And that will be transferred to the abutting lot, Lot Map 12, Lot 78. That's the old purpose of this plan.
If, yeah, we'll go to Harry.
Just a couple of background questions. Did, was this closed out? Does this have a certificate of occupancy, a certificate of completion in the file?
As I reported in the comments, I didn't find an as-built, as-built plan.
Oh, okay.
It definitely appears that the driveway was built in accordance with the plan. I went out to the site and inspected it.
This is the as-built.
That's the.
That is, that is the as-built. I conducted and drew the as-built.
Yeah, see, I couldn't.
And that was submitted to the Planning Board.
It was.
Yes. It was, it was reviewed by David Wagner. He was out there when the driver was being put in from BSC at the time.
So when did the Planning Board approve it? Do you?
2010.
In 2010?
Yeah.
Yeah. I, I looked, but, you know, it probably is there. I didn't find it, so I can look for it, continue looking for it.
They're never getting a certificate of completion. I don't, I don't remember it ever coming up again.
Well, they wouldn't have got a building permit if they, they didn't.
And?
With the Board of Health and the Building Inspector for Building Permit,득证， and득证， that all, that would have to all be checked off.
Is, is the cul-de-sac currently paved?
No, it's just, see, this, this is just.
This is the driveway. I see the driveway.
Purpose was, is just to create access, and then you would not build a roadway, because it's a one-lot subdivision.
Right.
You double the area, because it was 40,000, now it's 81,000.
In lieu of building a physical court?
In lieu of building a road, yes. Well, courts now are 30 feet wide, lanes are 40 feet wide. But back then, in 2010, a court had to be 50 feet wide minimum. But you've changed your regulations to actually reduce the size for courts starting with 30 feet wide. So in lieu of that, we're keeping the 50 feet wide.
Excuse me.
And we're keeping it 50 feet wide, whereas, we could've went 30, but I wanted to keep 50, 'cause in spirit of that, that regulation back then, I just didn't wanna change it.
So just bear with me, and I apologize. I'm just trying to understand. So the 50-foot width that you have now?
Yeah.
Was that what you had before?
No, I had, that was the odd.
That was that odd shape before?
Right here.
Okay. And then, I'm just curious, why was it shaped that way before?
Um, it was, it was the lot. Okay, that's the boundary. Okay. And it had a big, it was a rise here, and it was like a ledge spot up in here.
So you just added it in?
We just add, instead of just doing 50 feet wide, it would, it would just be a parcel by itself.
Sticking off by.
Just sticking it by itself.
Okay, I got it.
So that's why we just incorporated, it was an odd-shaped court.
I understand.
Right-of-way.
Okay.
Private right-of-way.
Yep.
Private.
Okay.
The town's not, does not do any maintenance to it. That's the owner, the owner of Lot 77 owns that. And that's what we're petitioning.
And there are trees in it, and it's wooded?
It's wooded. It's all wooded, right here. Yep. Actually, you see the graves right here, they go up. So it's like, it's like a stone wall, it's very high, and it comes down towards the street. I'd say it's about 10 or 15 feet high, than the, than the, the distant driveway right there.
And, and John, what, what are we, we're being asked to simply approve a minor modification, this minor modification?
Yes, yep.
So is there, will there be any kickback with regards to Harry's question before, which we, let's say the Board were to say yes to the minor modification, but we're in a public hearing, which isn't part of a minor modification, does it matter? To me, you would think reasonableness would say it wouldn't matter, but, yeah, I just wanna make sure we don't.
Well, the other thing is, it's been submitted as a minor modification. This Board could actually consider it anything other than a minor modification. You could consider it a modification to an approved subdivision plan. The applicant is taking the position, and I believe he's on solid legal ground, that this minor modification requires the notification of a public hearing, and abutters being notified thereof, you know, of this hearing tonight. As he also said earlier, there's a 20-day appeal period if the Board, if and when the Board approves this plan. So if the Board was to move tonight to approve it, there would be a 20-day appeal period in effect. Now, part of this submission is an A and R plan, which I did ask for them to withdraw, and that would be the next order of business for the Board to conduct, allowing them to withdraw without prejudice, so that the 20-day appeal, appeal period can, can take place. And, you know, we do know now there's no extension allowance within Mass General Law for 21-day plans.
Right.
Even if both parties agree to it, so.
Yeah. Okay, so, okay, I'm, I think I'm all set. Harry?
Just, just to be, I'm sorry. There's nothing, this, this doesn't imply any change of use.
No, no, we just take your piece of parcel of land that has nothing, no utilities on it, it's just.
Right.
It's just ledge with some trees on it, and that's all it is.
What is the purpose of the change? Just to kind of?
Just to add to this law, because we're eventually gonna break a law. Break a law off.
Just to make that law bigger?
No, actually, I'm doing the A and R process. I'll, I can show you that. I can show you that right now. But I wanna get to Andy's comments.
And so essentially, what we're doing is, we're straightening it out, and would this Board's action create frontage for that lot? What is it, 78? Is that 78? Is that what we're calling 78?
Yeah.
This one?
Yeah, that one, yeah.
Yeah.
Would that create frontage on a private court by our action? And if the answer is yes, then do we actually have the right to create frontage for someone on a wholly owned private court of another?
Fantastic question.
Oh, I got the good ones, buddy.
We, we, I did go over this with Les, and.
Okay.
Yeah. And within the definition of frontage.
Right.
It's, it's non-distant whether it's public or private. You can gain frontage off a private way. But Bob, and I talked about this in depth also, if you would like to explain to them, so it goes halfway into the tangent, proposed tangent, and it comes out in a perpendicular line. This is how you would measure frontage. It comes out in a perpendicular line, crisscrossing with the existing right-of-way. So from that.
At an intersection, you take half the curve for the frontage. So we'd only be claiming half the frontage of that curve.
That, that frontage is measured how?
A lot, you can either take the tangent, there's two ways. You can either take the tangent lines, which is, here, here you have a circle, and then you just, those tangents come up to a point, and that's the tangent lines. That's the, from the.
Can you, with your finger, show me on that, where that, how that would work?
Well, I can actually draw on the plan.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
Here's, say you have a straightaway, and then you have a curve, and then it straightens out again. So that's like the point of curvature, and that's.
Oh, and the tangency of those, yeah?
So the tangent lines, if you extend this line out, and extend this line out, those are the tangent lines. So you can claim this much of, of frontage on that. But the other way is, you can, you can just take half that curve, and because you're on an intersection, you can recreate that, that frontage right there.
Okay.
You can claim that frontage. In other words, if you had a lot that had, was on a corner, you can only have frontage, you can't claim frontage on both, both roadways.
Right.
So that's why you go, you can claim one side, and then go half, half the circle. You can't go around the whole curve.
Understand.
And that's a standard measurement.
Standard practice.
I'm not talking about.
That's a standard practice.
Actually doing it. What I'm saying is, it looks to me as though you are creating frontage.
Yes, we are. Absolutely.
Court, absolutely. Not just on Thurlow.
Yeah, absolutely.
And I question whether that can be done. If I were to own a private court, does some, of which I had full and total responsibility for plowing and maintenance and upkeep, can someone else derive their frontage from my court? So that I have the full onus of maintaining that court while they derive the benefit of it without an easement?
But they're not accessing, they're not gonna access it.
We're not gonna access this, this.
It's just.
We're not, we're not showing you any access off this.
If they were to come back.
Frontage. We're not.
And if they were to do that.
The only thing for you tonight is just to do this Parcel A right here. That's all we're talking about, this Parcel A.
And, and correct me if I'm wrong, John, but I, I thought I heard you say that both you and Les were in agreement that you could create frontage on either a private.
Or public.
Or public. So.
That's within the definition that's provided in the zoning.
So that's just.
Our zoning.
Yeah.
But, 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 so, I guess what I wanna point out, my understanding, John, correct me if I'm wrong, is that creating frontage is not necessarily therefore meaning there's gonna be access to it. It's just the frontage that's being created, and the access is gonna be off of Thurlow.
I just wanna add another line, because I did mention.
Off of Thurlow.
I did mention earlier perpendicular line. So this is the halfway point right here. So that perpendicular line I'm talking about matches up with this. But it is the distance from where the tangent.
The point of curvature.
Yeah, P dot.
And then that's a point of curvature, PC, PT.
So this perpendicular line runs in, intersects with the existing roadway. That's how, that's how frontages on corner lots are determined, pretty much universally.
That's, that's the normal practice.
Yeah. I do, I do have, I do have one question with, this is sort of a global picture of, I guess, the history of that whole chunk of all those three parcels. So there's.
Well, this is, this was just one parcel.
That was one before.
This has nothing to do with the.
Nothing to do with this one. So at what point, and I don't know if this is a rhetorical question or not, John, I'd be curious what you, what you think, but, and Bob, what do you have, what do you think? At what point do all of these driveways start to line up as we pick away at these, at this A and R process? When, the A and R process allows you to do, and you get all these curb cuts versus controlling all of those curb cuts into one? At what point does that? At what point does the A and R?
If you have frontage in area, then you have a billable lot, and you have to have access to it. So.
Yeah, for sure.
I mean, you'd probably wanna pick the safest spot on, on the frontage for, you know, for sight distance, for safety, when you come out of, come out of your billable lot, which has frontage in area and access. So you have to have access to your lot to prove that's one of the A and R.
Yep. No, for sure.
Yeah.
For sure. It's, it's just, it's something that I have never fully come to terms with in my own head of the A and R process over time.
You have so many driveways lined up.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, this is, this is an issue everywhere.
No, I know.
And, you know, the ideal thing is that, say, towns adopted an ordinance whereby you could have upwards of, say, three lots that would be serviced by one shared driveway.
Common driveway.
The problem is, shared driveways do not add.
Not good neighbors.
Yeah, they're not.
They don't work.
Not as good as good fences.
Who's gonna maintain?
The way, can you move your car, can you move your car?
And it becomes a lot of public disturbance. And, and it becomes a lot of public disturbance.
Yeah, well, I, I don't have any more questions, does anybody else have any more questions right now?
The, the only thing that sticks in my mind is, and, and I can't find it, naturally, I'm looking for it now, but. Reading the, um. The decision for the original, uh, there was something in there about no further subdivision.
Of the lots, of the lots, this is a court, that's a, it's a, it's an access, it's not a lot. It's lots.
But doesn't court always have to be part of the lot? That, that part of it?
They own it, it's not, it's not part of, that's, like, you can't count that area as, as the lot, so it's not part of that lot. It, it, well. It is part of the lot, but it's not the lot area. It's two separate parcels. Which is a right of way and a lot. That's not, this is not a lot, it's a right of way, which, which was created, you cannot count that as the area of the lot.
And for, and for what it's worth, that's, that's um history.
I mean, it's an undeveloped court.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it's.
A paper route, big.
Right, right.
Any, anything else?
You know, the, the only thing that um Attorney Yankman cautious, cautious, cautioned us on was um. To make sure that the mortgage holder, if there is one or more. If they've been notified of this proposed change, and have they.
Well, that, they won't tran, that will be in transfer, once they transfer that piece over, then, then that will have to be go, going through the mortgage company for that.
Yeah, but prior to these changes being effectuated by a planning board action.
Yeah.
Give them advance notice of.
What's our, what's our?
Deeds, deeds transfer land, planning board decisions don't. In other words, this, when this gets transferred, it can only be transferred by a deed, and lawyers will write up the deed. And then it will be, have to be cleared by the mortgager.
Well, want me to do a quick read, or you wanna read it yourself?
Well, how, how long is it?
It, it's quick, this is Mass General Law forty one and eighty one W. Fairly recently approved by the state legislature and enacted by the governor, no modification, amendment, or rescission. Of the approval of a plan of a subdivision, or changes in such plan shall affect the lots in such subdivision. Which have been sold or mortgaged in good faith and for valuable consideration subsequent to the approval of the, of the plan. Or any rights pertinent thereto without the consent of the owner of such lots. And of the holder of the mortgage or mortgages, if any, thereon.
So that's preapproval.
Provided, however, that nothing herein shall be deemed to prohibit such modification, amendment, or rescission. When there has been a sale of a single grantee of either the entire parcel of land shown on the subdivision plan. Or of all the lots not previously released by the planning board.
So let me just go back like three quarters of the way in there, did, did what I hear say that the, that, that the approval comes first and.
It sounded like there was advance notice of it before the deed is actually changed.
Correct.
Cause the deed is the official change, that the change has been done.
Correct.
That language made it sound like before the, it's.
Deeds cheers for a land, plans don't.
But is that saying that the planning board has to?
We could, we could take the action to approve it. The deed being changed in the mortgage holder notified of that would have to agree to it.
Well, they're, they're the applicant.
Right, so what you're saying is correct.
Yes.
We can take this action, it really doesn't mean anything in accordance with this law. Unless the mortgage holder allows for it.
Oh, yeah, no, oh, of course, oh, for sure.
We can approve.
Oh, I thought, I was misunderstanding, I thought you were saying the opposite, that we, we couldn't do this until the deed was getting transferred first, and so I was.
Plane has to be approved first.
And now, I mean, there's two deeds to be modified, right?
Yes, the deed, the deed will be modified, yes. When they transfer this piece over to the abiding property, the deeds will.
We need to uh vote on approving this as a minor amendment?
Um, yes.
Is that correct?
Yes, I do have a written motion if anybody um would want to.
Sure, absolutely.
Let me just take one second.
Which one, I think they're one, two, three, four, five.
Well, we already opened the public hearing.
All right, four, four.
We couldn't vote to close the public hearing at this point. If no one, the audience is.
Can, can I just? Just before we do that, can, just one thing, did, did you say that's? Uh, ledge and trees?
Well, it's, it's a high point here.
And is it landscaped, because landscaping has to stay with seventy seven A.
There's no, there's no landscape board, it's just straw, it's just, was never graded out, it was just, this is the only.
Natural.
It's just natural, it's natural.
So your, your motion, John?
Yeah, right here.
Short one?
Yeah, okay. Do you wanna read it?
Um, of course.
This, yeah, this scrippling here. And leads into reading this here, which is the title of the modification plan.
I'm gonna abbreviate that.
Yes.
But we're just gonna call it a modification, not a minor modification, right? We're not gonna call it a minor.
Yeah, and the plan is actually entitled modification, modification plan.
Well, my application was a, a minor modification.
Yeah, that's fine, it's, what's gonna be recorded, and it will be easier to find a modification plan that's actually titled that. Good point, Harry.
So um, if, if the board, normally I wouldn't as the chair, but if the board is all right, I'm gonna read this as the motion, then you second. All right, um, so, I moved to approve the modification uh to the approved definitive subdivision. Plan approved by the planning board in two thousand and ten. Said modification plan is entitled. Definitive subdivision plan lot seventy seven A, Thurlow Street, Plan Book four twenty six, Plan seventy six, Georgetown, Mass. Dated twelve November two thousand and eighteen, and consisting of sheet one of one. Plan titled modification plan.
I'll second Mr. Chairman.
Motion has been made and been seconded, any discussion? No discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, four yes, one absent. Thank you.
Thank you. And. Close the hearing. Yeah.
We should close the hearing, Mr. Chairman.
Please.
We should close the public hearing.
Second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to close the public hearing, any discussion? No discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
One absent, four, public hearing is closed.
Thank you, Scott, thank.
I love the. Really flash, man.
Now, are, are we um going towards the withdrawal?
Yes.
We're gonna move to an A and R withdrawal? And. John, if you wanna.
Yes, um. This request um put forward by the applicant's representative, um, Mr. Grasso. Is requesting leave to withdraw without prejudice of the A and R plan that is associated with the plan we just approved. But because the plan we just approved has a twenty day appeal period associated with it, uh, and we wouldn't have time to act. They've agreed to um withdraw that plan and submit it for our next meeting. And that would be after the twenty day appeal period has expired, and we'll be good to go at that point. So the motion that needs to be made, and um, we do have that.
Mr. Chairman, if you'll hear it?
One, one second, Harry.
Absolutely.
Um, this form H is.
That's for um, the um, that's for the other pen that we don't need to bother with anymore.
So withdrawing, that's.
Can I put an X through this?
Yeah, and um, that, we have in writing the request for withdrawal.
Okay, that, I just wanted to, I didn't wanna, I didn't wanna.
So all we need to do is notify.
Um, so Harry.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, I move to grant the leave to withdraw without prejudice for the A and R plan application one oh three Thurlow Street, map twelve, lot seventy eight. Plan entitled plan of land located in Georgetown, Mass, one oh three Thurlow Street, lot seventy eight. And seventy eight A parcel A and B prepared by Engineering Land Services. West Newbury, Mass, dated the twenty eighth of November two thousand and eighteen, with no revision date consisting of sheet one of one.
Second.
Uh, motion has been made, and it has been seconded to approve the request to withdraw the A and R plan application. As so noted by my colleague, without prejudice. Any discussion? No discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do we need anything signed?
No.
No, okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, have a good one.
Thank you.
Merry Christmas.
Stay safe, Merry Christmas to you two. So we're gonna move on to the planning office, sixty six Parish Road, the OSRD and. Approval notice of decision.
That doesn't require any motion at all, we're just signing, right?
We can, we can, any, any, anyone have any issues? We all set to sign it?
Looks good, looks like a very good deci, yeah, I have an issue with my phone tonight.
It's not listening to you.
How low do you have to put these things?
Pass this around for signatures, um, at the end of the meeting, if everybody would uh take a crack at, as you're doing that, I'm gonna sign the milar. Do we have to sign all the milars?
Um, yes, wherever there's a signature blocking.
I lost the agenda. I lost the agenda.
Five G type communications type.
That's the curse of the newest member, you know?
Is it cause it's?
We make you get up over and over and over. How many sheets does it take?
You can only do three at a time, cause they're, I mean, they'd fall apart if you tried.
There's a fish that cheated off, cheated off in here.
I did something to my back about two weeks ago. And it's a lot better than it was. But it's still not good.
Do we not have?
Not good, yeah.
We can approach this from so many different ways.
It could just last for so long, you're like.
What day is it, like?
Twelve.
Twelve?
Twelve, twelve.
Eighteen.
I think.
Sometimes I think I'm in better shape than I am. I can go down pretty quick, but, you know, running up is.
These need to be dated? Harry, can you date those?
Yeah. At our economic development committee meeting last night.
Do you ever go home?
No. My dogs, my dogs miss me. Nobody else, nobody in the house, yeah, nobody else in the house does.
I totally get it, I totally get it.
I miss them too. They're my reason for going home. No, there are other reasons.
You, you have cats?
No.
No, okay.
No, no cat. Wife doesn't want cats, she's allergic to them.
So I, I think I can uh give you back this notebook, John. The um. Vouchers are signed and.
Excellent. Excellent. Our administrative capability is extraordinary. Now, if the plans would just come in, so they're more clear cut, never.
Harry, you missed one.
Come on, really?
Disappointed, Harry.
It's my compliance background.
Those Golden Glove guys say never mind, I'm making error.
Did you get, you got this one?
Do you watch football?
Uh, this is the honest to God truth, I didn't watch anything of the game, cause I was doing stuff, and I turned it on for the last two minutes.
Oh, my God, that was.
That's what I saw.
You were smiling up until the last second, and it's like, what? He's gonna get past him.
That, that was as much coaching as anything else, that was as much coaching as anything else.
Oh, yeah? Executed perfectly.
That was bad.
And everybody, everybody out there thought somebody else was gonna get him.
Well, when you see a player. Going like this, and then all of a sudden speed up, you, you, I mean, you know there's a problem, and there were a lot of them doing that.
That was, that was an incredible game of chess in rapid motion.
Yeah, yeah. No, it was, it was, it was, I, I think it was a bad call by Belichick, and he should own it, he should say, I made a bad call, but he'll never do that. And then I think the players contributed to it, they missed tack, two missed tackles, um, you know, lack of keeping people in front of you. I, I think they miss, uh, their defense is really um inconsistent. But what I see in their defense now is the angles that the defensive backs take, the angles that the linebackers take. They're, they're not very good, and they're getting, these guys are getting beat a number of times, and I can't help but think that they miss. Matt Patricia more than anybody's talking about. I really do, I, I think their coaching, you remember, you remember when Dante Scarnecchia, Scarnecchia?
Yeah.
Left, their offensive line went down the tubes, and the year he came back, same players, came flying back.
He knows how to teach him how to dance.
I think you're right about Patricia. Where, where did he go to?
Detroit.
Are we still on?
Head coach, we are. We are, well, we're, we're.
It's a football branch.
Sports Central.
We're signed.
And now, back to the planning board. Throw the ball to you, Rob.
It's holiday season. So we have for the last item, after signing that, we have the member of public concern.
Hey, I found my agenda.
Uh, discussion on five G telecommunications, John, look in here, tell us about that.
We know what is.
Well, um, I think it has to, what we're dealing with downtown actually is four G technology.
Right.
Oh, it's not five?
Yeah, so we have the number mixed up, when we're talking about the uh antennae system that they're proposing downtown. And that's four G technology, and that's specifically for um cellphone communications.
What's the difference between four G and five G?
Well, five G, it, it transmits um wirelessly um data, internet data faster, so.
High frequency.
It's just faster.
Much higher frequency.
That's the next technology.
I think they both function as the same thing.
I don't really care about that part that you can't see, does the object that goes on the poles changing?
Uh, no, no, it, it, the, the stuff that we're looking at for that poll that's proposed downtown, that's four G. My bad, I thought it was five, but it's, all the paperwork is specifying four G technology, so that's just to. That's being proposed. At that location, pretty much because of the volume of traffic associated with that.
Can you tell, can you tell everybody where that location is?
Um, it is right at the intersection of um Central Street and East West Main Street. So it's in, right across the street, south of uh North Street.
Oh, wait, Central and West Main, Central and West Main don't.
East and West Main.
Yeah, east and west.
Square there, so.
Main. Right, that's it, with the, the mobile station.
Is it on, it's.
Oh, okay, okay.
Is the other side?
Is it the mobile station that?
The map seemed to show it was further down near the Davis Building.
Right, yeah.
Is it on that side of the Davis Building?
That, that, that's what the map showed, that was one of the, the map, but it was tough to see the, you couldn't really see the pictures.
Yeah, it was too dark, yeah.
Yeah, they all blacked out.
Yeah, yeah.
That, I guess, I guess.
But there's a map, and it's, it's showing.
I'm just trying to understand, cause I, I don't understand clearly where it's going and what it's gonna look like. I'm just trying to understand, because I, I don't understand clearly where it's going and what it's gonna look like.
So is it kind of like between the, the shopping plaza for the Davis Building and then where that attorney is in that house there?
Yes.
Yeah, it looked like as you're coming from ninety-five towards the square.
Go through the light.
No, don't go through the light. It would be before the light on the left.
So here's East Main Street, West Main Street.
It's a, not a very detailed.
End of street.
Exact place.
So, but it's on, but it's on this side?
Yes, yes, like in front of the Davis Building.
And, and the pole is? Do you have any of those up there, John? You can?
Yeah.
So the Davis Building is where the cleaners is.
It's like, it used to be the chocolate cellar.
At night it'd look like that. In a blackout.
The, the old bookstore.
This is, John, this is a cellular tower, right?
No, it's, um.
It's Wi-Fi?
It's a compact antenna system.
Oh, okay.
Part of it is mounted on top of a telephone pole.
Yeah.
What they're proposing to do is to put in their own pole. And it would be owned by AT&T at this particular site.
And it's functioning, it's a cell tower though.
Next to settlers.
Yeah.
It's, it's not, it's not for ubiquitous Wi-Fi.
Before, okay.
Maybe before, yeah.
No.
That's where it should be. So, so John, so we've established, for everybody who may be watching, so we've established the location, which is near the Davis Building. I thought, just clarified, I thought this was going on a telephone pole that was going to be the Georgetown Electric Department's ownership. But what I'm hearing tonight is that this is.
Their own, I guess.
This is going on their own pole.
Yeah, it's a new pole.
Nothing to do with it.
That is correct.
Is that correct?
Yeah.
The paperwork says that the municipal light department doesn't allow anything to be added to their poles.
Okay, all right. Because I think the light department is working on, for the future, for the future, some, um, some, some specs, some ordinances.
That's a good picture.
Here we go. Let me see if I can go down here and they.
Okay.
And this is required? They're just working with us on the exact location?
Uh, no, no, it's not required. Let me get a couple of, um.
Because I didn't hear, it made it sound like he was.
I think it's where this, which is.
I was just reading.
So, and I saw that, which is on the other photographs as well.
Yeah. So this is the general vicinity.
With the cone in?
Now.
That's why they put the cone there?
So, so.
How big is this going to be?
It's the height of a telephone pole, right? And then it has about a, a two, three foot in height projection beyond that. Let me see here.
Can you, John?
Yep.
I think everybody knows where it's gonna happen.
Yep, okay.
Can you go to a picture that shows this depth?
There it is. That's what it looks like. This is the power plant of it.
See it?
With the antenna, um, wires heading up to the actual antenna.
So this is, they're putting in a telephone pole, then this scabbed on whatever?
The cat.
Gotcha.
Why would there be wires on it?
Yeah, that looks like.
That, that would be carrying wires of other infrastructure, cable TV, power.
But there isn't one there now.
Yep.
We're adding more wires to the square.
Or is this saying that it's adding capability?
That's what they would like to do. No one's agreed to this at all.
John, what is, what is this utility box for, do you know?
Uh, that's just a power.
That your lights?
Yeah.
Is that your, your streetlights?
Yeah.
Why?
No, your, your.
Streetlights.
Um, signals, signals, traffic, traffic, thank you. Couldn't figure the word out.
Why do they have to put this pole up like right in the middle of town?
What, what's happening out there in the cellphone world, people are in line there and a lot of traffic calls, so this is a weak spot.
Oh, I know that. All Georgetown's a weak spot, but.
It's the heaviest volume of traffic and it's a weak spot, so this antenna would help facilitate better cellphone usage.
So I think everybody would be in agreement that that makes sense.
Right, that we want it.
So, so the question is where, and do you have any sense from them, what kind of plus or minus location they have for that?
That's the ideal.
Understood.
And, yeah, that's where they want to put it. I think they would be willing to work with the town if there's a better location that would also have the capacity that this location has. I think that's a matter of working with the town.
Like, I guess in the, so, and let me ask this, what's the schedule on this thing? What's, what's the protocol? How's this going?
Right now, in accordance with the Board of Selectmen's most recent meeting.
Yep.
Dave Schofield, General Manager, Georgetown Electric Light, he's working with other municipal light departments. They're having a meeting and they're trying to come up with a model ordinance that would facilitate this technology. Help to facilitate the technology while at the same time, um, having that technology mounted, and it would be in Georgetown, mounted on poles that are owned by both Verizon and Georgetown Municipal Light.
So.
It's a fifty-fifty.
But so, so what, what Georgetown Light Department is doing right now is about the future.
Right.
It has nothing to do with this.
Correct.
Okay, so I want to put that aside for now.
Yeah.
What, what is the schedule for this in terms of who's approving it? Who, is this?
It, it's within the public right of way.
Yeah.
Public rights of way.
Other selectmen.
Domain of the selectmen.
Correct.
The only thing that may come into play here is the FCC. And their apparent dominance with trying to move this technology forward and facilitate its build-out. And they've done this with other telecommunications towers where it used to require special permits being issued by the municipality. And there was no allowance for going around it. And now you can put one of these up with the building permit, provided, you know, there's a, you can prove the void. Exists for wireless service.
So, um, my understanding, um, I don't know if it was an email to you, copied to me, to me, copied to you, whatever, but, uh, help me remember, did the, had the selectmen officially requested the planning board to take this on and be involved with them in this? I think they did, correct?
They did.
Okay.
Subsequent to that, subsequent to that, um, Dave Schofield got in touch with Mike Farrell.
Right, but that's about the future. So that has, that's not about this, right? Okay.
So we're still on track to work with John Eichman if we so choose the town. And come up with an ordinance for the May annual town meeting that we're getting over.
My, so my, again, but, so that ordinance though, John, has nothing to do with this. That ordinance is about the future. And, and right now, my understanding is Georgetown Electric is taking the lead on gathering this information. They're gonna bring it to, um, the town, selectmen, planning board, to then start to massage it, adopt it, reject it, whatever, to bring that to the annual town meeting. But that's all about the future. That's all about.
This.
This guy, what I'm trying to, what I'm trying to get an answer to is. The selectmen approve it, that's now clear to me, but they're now looking to us for feedback. Basically, is, they made an official request to get feedback from us.
I believe. For this particular.
This particular application, so.
Don't they need to hold a hearing?
Well, they probably, I don't know, they probably are, but.
Hearing, don't they?
I get, that's up to them. I believe that they'll be doing what they need to do. But I, I guess, so this is the first time this board has seen this. And so I, I'm thinking that now it's like a, you know, think on it, you know, ask questions tonight if you have some, but, um, you know, I think we should, we should have, bring it up at the next meeting to then provide.
Tilson, Tilson's position, the applicant, is that, yeah, with FCC rulings and guidelines and federal communications law, the laws that are in effect, that they have the right to apply to the permit granting authority for the installation of one of these systems. That permit granting authority is the, or selectmen.
Right.
They do control the jurisdiction of rights away.
Right.
Now, the Board of Selectmen have not moved in the direction of approving this, modifying it or denying.
Right.
At this point in time.
Right.
They're not convinced at this point, from what I understand, that they actually have to act. But what needs to be paid attention to is this a formal application? And does that formal application have a deadline that has to be adhered to by the town?
Yeah, what I, I mean, the punchline is, or a punchline is, I want to at all cost avoid, for whatever reason, schedules not being, people not signing what they're supposed to sign, jobs not being done, that they come in and put this where they want to put it, how they want to put it, without any input from, from, from us, from the selectmen.
Yeah, so the homework that really needs to be done, because I don't, I really don't know what the timeframes are. If this is a formal application that has to be, has to be acted on by the Board of Selectmen in, in a timeframe. That's associated with whether or not this has been formally submitted. I don't know if it's been formally submitted. They've been kicking it around and I don't know if this meeting that they had, the Board of Selectmen had with Tilson, was just an intro.
Right.
To the idea of this, this technology.
So.
That has to be determined. And I can work with Mike tomorrow.
Okay.
As an agent of this planning board. But really taking into consideration that the, again, the permit granting authority is the authority who owns those rights away.
Yes, and no question, and we'd just, we'd just be providing our opinion and, and for the selectmen to do with as they see fit. I get that. Um, I guess, the only comment I can make at this point in time, now that I'm seeing this for the first time, is that my concern is that probably the downtown is one of Georgetown's most culturally significant pieces of history that it has. And it's been beaten up, it keeps getting beaten up. And at some point in time, it would be really nice that the downtown is improved into such a place that everybody, you know, is proud of a really well-designed, well-planned downtown and, and so on and so forth. And seeing this right beside our power pack, right beside where the biggest pole for the lighting is, for the traffic light is, you know, with these new wires going in, um, what I see is a, a location that is best for them. But I'm not at all convinced it's best for the town. So, um.
I couldn't agree more. I think it's the worst, worst possible decision.
I was always hopeful of a judge, a downtown Georgetown square that had no wires and no poles. We actually put out, uh, if, if you recall with Nick, we actually had a mural made and put on, well, on that corner building, right? On the direct opposite one, that showed the town without wires. It showed that.
It's, it's important to develop that vision because this guy's probably not gonna go away. This might be the kind of model for the kind of, of letting, of instrument.
But if I could just say.
Broke it.
I did.
No, no, just, it's, you know, before, you know, just to interject a small amount.
Please, yeah.
It's not inconceivable. The next generation of streetlight stanchions, they're much more aesthetically pleasing. But, you know, those are going the way of the Hussem Buggy. You know, all of that.
When will Georgetown be getting a new?
Structural pollution. Should be the goal of Georgetown.
Right.
And last night at the Economic Development Committee meeting, um, you know, there, there was serious conversation about, you know, moving in the direction of getting all of the poles, putting everything underground. And, uh, you know, going in the next generation of beautifying, uh, the downtown.
That would be smart.
Right. Smart thing to do.
So in that, in that, John, John, in, in that Economic Development Committee, if, if, if there's, those are wonderful discussions to be having. But there's, there's no question in my mind that the planning board needs to be part of that. And before the Economic Development Committee gets too far down the road, you know, there's just so much, uh, experience on this board to help with, you know, how to do that. Take advantage of that.
But if, if this thing is, is kind of, uh, coming, uh, one way or the other, can, can you go back up to that map? I'm, I'm wondering if they could draw a circle that that is the center and say.
Got a cold. Just getting rid of it. Should have heard me two weeks ago.
Whoever that map was.
Hold on, we'll get there.
It's okay. I'm not going anywhere.
Hey, why is that phone there?
I, I could make it go faster, but. I'm already on the other button.
Oh, we got plenty of time. We got nine thirty-five. Start whining. If, you know, if they could say, say, if, if they're saying that this is the deadest spot that they've got, well, what kind of a diameter or, or, yeah, what kind of a diameter from here would they, are they talking about?
It's, that's the camel's nose. Don't kid yourself. That's the camel's nose. The rest is coming into the tent.
The, the thing is, there's a whole nother conversation about what five G means and four G, because you can't interchange them. They're different technologies. This will not work on five G. The next, the, the next version will and it'll be like Christmas in July.
Technology's perfect. Until six G is created.
Where?
Seven and eight.
I, I, where, where could this possibly be that isn't there?
And, and, and to that, to that, and these may be notes that you want to share with people, but, um, I'm not at all comfortable with, with an applicant coming before me and waving their hand as to this is the best spot for it because it's this, this, this. I want to see documentation that shows how they, that, that shows, you know, how this is the spot that needs to be where it goes versus somewhere else. And that doesn't mean to give us information that we don't understand. Their job is to translate that information. I just need more than just people saying this is where it goes because of this. I need to see some documentation behind that so that we can get a better understanding of what Bob's talking about, where that thing can actually move. I, I will add, the idea of taking one design element and attaching it on top of a second design element, which is a utility pole, is a non-starter for this guy.
Yeah.
There's just no reason to not do that right from the get-go as one piece. And have it be something that's a little intentional.
I mean, as I suggested in the comments report at the end of it, um, you know, at the end of this discussion, this is what I was anticipating, the board may determine that the best course of action is to work with the proponent of the antenna system and develop a best location aesthetic quality appearance of the proposed device. This scenario would be of great importance to consider if in fact such systems cannot be denied from being established via federal telecommunications law.
I, I, I think that's, I think that's absolutely correct.
Yeah. I, you know, I think, as with a lot of proposals, um, they're strange and really unwanted when you initially encounter them. But he, here's the reality, there, there's definite need for enhanced telecommunications.
Everybody's on board with that.
In that location. Now, where did they put the first generation of telecommunications towers? In church steeples, out of sight, out of mind, and everybody's using their cellphones more conveniently, for instance. What happened, in my opinion, what happened in that first generation, which was only twenty years ago, every company was out there mounting, trying to mount these, these towers up. And they weren't getting anywhere with the localities. The localities lack, lacked the vision to put them on their highest points, geographic points and take advantage of the revenue that's produced by these, you know, mounting antennae systems along the circumference of a water tower, for instance. It's a great location. Tower is already impacting the visual aesthetics. But, you, you know, here's an opportunity towns missed out, or many towns missed out on that first generation build-out of perhaps making twenty, thirty, forty thousand dollars a month with co-location costs and everything else. So what happened in that first generation of telecommunications towers, um, people were able to put them on their private property. Those people were the ones that benefited greatly revenue-wise, income-wise, out of that first generation. This is the, the next generation of telecommunications. And as the plan is, this small antennae system is going to be built out throughout the country. One of the benefits, you know, I know I'm getting carried away here, if you want to keep up, but one of the benefits, a study just came. One of the benefits, you know, I know I'm getting carried away here, if you wanna keep up, but one of the benefits, a study just came out, for every thousand people that have access to broadband technology, eighty new jobs are created. So for every thousand people, eighty new jobs are created. So this is the next, uh, jobs creation venture, pretty much for the entire country. And this build-out in these small antenna systems, it's just now, and, and these have been talked about and studied and, you know, produced, the betas of them were produced for the last twenty years, they finally got them up and running and they're starting to implement them, uh, you know, nationwide. So, you know, and one of my captions was, um, 5G technology coming to a telephone pole near you, that's the future reality. Um, this is the technology that is going to pretty much replace the need for the higher, you know, bigger antenna systems that are already in place.
You're not talking about this, you're talking about the next generation.
No, I'm talking about this.
This is 4G. 4G is what you've got right now.
Right, but the.
5G is a whole different technology.
No, it's, it's just faster broadband.
But it doesn't work, it's a different technology.
It's compatibility.
It doesn't work.
It's microwave.
Well, it's all.
But you need, you need new, you need to upgrade your, your cellphone.
I will, I will.
A new cellphone. I will say this, um, uh, you know, this to me is a design exercise. Everybody is on board with, you know, that it's needed. I don't think anyone's questioning that. It's, at, at one scale, at a global scale, it's a planning exercise, which is the best location.
Yeah.
And then it becomes a design exercise and, um, I've got to believe, uh, little old Georgetown, I've gotta believe there are other towns or cities that have dealt with this already. And that they have come up with probably some pretty creative ideas how to do it.
Yeah.
I don't know who or how we researched that, but, uh, that's what we should do.
There, there is a lot of stuff on the internet already.
This should be special permit.
But we don't.
Not just for the installation, but for the eventual 5G, so that they take them down after it's all over.
Well, now.
The same way that.
Well, that.
Our solar bylaw.
That.
Yeah.
Provides for discontinuation and removal.
But it's not a special permit, cause it's with the Selectmen.
Well, that's just.
But in ordinance.
There isn't a bylaw yet.
Yeah.
Well, okay, good, well, that's, so that's, yeah, so, um, so, so be it with that. Um, but that doesn't mean on this particular item, that, that can't be one of our recommendations to the Select Board, to say, look, as part of your, they need to take it down when it changes to 5G and that's part of the agreement.
Yeah, and that's, that is contained within the two model ordinances that have been, um, included with the staff reports. So there are two different, um, model ordinances that are proposed here, one's from the, from the Federal Communications Board. And then the other one was from, here it is, uh, National League of Cities and National Association of Telecommunications Officers and Advisors. So those two entities were working together to come up with a model ordinance.
So, so how, so how would, I'm trying to think, how would we as an office do research on this? I guess you'd wanna contact the, this company and ask them where have they put these things already and find out what towns they are and then contact those towns.
Yeah, and there's a, there are a lot of articles already, um, on the internet.
I bet.
In regard to this, and a lot of them have to do with Massachusetts towns, you know. One of the articles I, I cited a link to, um, is an attorney representing the town and he's forewarning everybody to, um, you know, get with it and, and get ready and put ordinances in place.
Prepare for it.
That are going to protect the aesthetic qualities of your town, so.
Special permit.
Yeah.
Well, we, on this, so, so, but again, but this guy is already in the, you know, this guy potentially is already in the works and we may not have anything we can do about that.
Yeah, yeah, but no, that, I, I really don't think that's the case.
Okay.
I think, you know, what we do, do need to find out, has it formally submitted and what are the deadlines for that submission for the town to take action? But, you know, ninety-nine percent of the time, the applicant is going to be willing to work with the municipality.
It's in everybody's best interest.
It's like a, some developer, wise developers do a good job.
Although I will, I, I will say, utility companies can't have an attitude.
Is that from?
No, 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 don't, don't, don't.
I'm sure these folks are different.
So, but, 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 you know, there is a cultural thing there and, and, you know, hopefully these people will be, would be willing to, to work there. So to move this thing forward from tonight.
Yeah.
You're, you're gonna find out what the schedule is, you know, is it a formal application? If not, when are they gonna be getting that to us for information? And what actual work can we start doing now as a board to start considering this?
Well, you know, we have a telecommunications ordinance in place already, as has been the case for years.
Oh, for the cell towers?
Yeah, yeah. That was in vogue, what, twenty years ago, whatever it is. Everybody was im- imposing those into their zoning ordinances. I'm thinking that, um, you know, we may be able to get away with quick, quick reference to this technology being superimposed into the existing ordinance. Rather than adding another thirty pages of, of regulation.
No, and so I, I'm not talking about that, which again is about the, uh, potential bylaw of coming into town meeting in the spring. I'm talking about this project. Someone needs to start digging up and doing some research, uh, on how this has been handled in other towns and how it looks. And, um, basically, you're looking for examples of it being well-done.
Yeah, right, exactly.
And, and then the issue of where it goes, is it, is it, is a planning issue versus a design issue?
Aesthetically suitable for that particular environment down there.
Yeah.
Which needs help.
Then that ain't.
In general.
That's not the help it needs.
No, 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 that's just adding to the problem.
Right, right.
The aesthetic.
So how do you, with your schedule, start tackling information?
Well, I'll get ahold of, um, the representative for Tilson, I, I've had, I have a great rapport with him, he's been.
Great. Maybe he could direct you to some towns that they've come up with some really nice design solutions, not the telephone pole one.
Yeah.
And he may say we don't have any, but then.
Yeah. That's the, that's the budget.
Understood.
Yeah, the low budget.
But this is a, this is a, a, a 4G repeater type thing. 5G, what you were talking about is many.
Yes.
Small antennas, so that would be something that we would really wanna, wanna look into.
Get on it now.
How we're gonna.
Might as well get a bylaw and target may. Target may, and as far as this is concerned, you know.
We're gonna do the best we can with this one.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
Cause I would, I would be concerned of Verizon or AT&T, or AT&T would come into town and start putting up little fences and little.
Yeah, I mean, this is very reminiscent of that first generation. Tilson builds out these, this, this is the agent for the AT&amp;Ts, Verizon and all the other carriers that run that. These are the guys that, um, go in, get the permits put in place and as, as their application sets, they're, they're the conduit for AT&amp;T who will own this facility.
You know, they're, I mean, they're, they're, they're just, I'm, I'm. Whoa, scary. As far as design issues are concerned, you have the first basic ones you hit are color. You know, flat black is gonna be a lot less obtrusive than stainless steel. You, you just start picking off the.
Looked like they were looking at a wooden pole.
With then this element on top of the wooden pole, so that, but that, that's what, that's a nonsense, that's unacceptable. And then, and then you start doing things like you develop rhythm where you have elements that are spaced at certain rhythms within the downtown and they start to blend into a bigger picture and they don't stand out by themselves.
Yeah.
Or they're not combined closely to another utility, which is ugly, and therefore drawing that much more attention to it. And so, you know, you, there's some pretty simple things you can do and if they're willing to work with us, then we should be able to help it, I'm sure. But I, I'm curious again, I don't wanna reinvent the wheel, I'm sure someone's.
Have you ever noticed the ones that they mount similar to this, but they're much larger on, um, power line stanchions?
Yeah, yeah.
I got, we got one right across the street from my house.
You do?
Gives, adds another ten feet to the power and the Hawks love it because they get a better view.
Okay, so, um, this would be on next meeting's agenda?
Yeah.
To get an update with this, some of this stuff.
Yeah, and see if we can get something put together.
Somebody probably has a, a bylaw already.
That's right.
Somebody probably has, I mean, not, not the ones made by the industry, but.
So Harry, it's, uh, it's only eight thirty, man.
Uh, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
If, no one has any objection, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I love it, I thought you were gonna say, I second that.
I know you want to say later.
Yeah, I thought you were gonna talk about finding things to talk about.
Yeah, I'm saying Merry Christmas and stuff like that.
All in favor?
Hi. Hi.
Hi.
Four yes, one no, and, um, have a Merry Christmas to everybody.
One no, who's no?
I mean, one absent.